I can tell you that this person was one of the youngest people to go through two years of the School of Ministry, amen? I can tell you that this person's on fire for God and living the real life, amen? It's not pretend. This person holds me up and holds me accountable. I am just amazed at what God is doing in these young people's lives. I'm amazed at the move of God right now, because the Spirit of God is just filling people. I am absolutely, totally, just overjoyed to present to you Minister Noel Johnson tonight. Amen?
Good evening, guys.
Hi.
So, I'm Noel. Never really spoken for y'all, so I'm really... Yeah, thank you, that's better. I'm really excited. I can definitely say that I'm very honored to be able to speak to y'all. I don't take it lightly in the least bit, and so thank y'all for giving me this opportunity.
Amen?
Yeah. So, I'm not gonna be cliche, but for real, I'm not gonna be before you long. For real, no. I just, you know, God placed something on my heart, and I just kinda wanna share a little story with y'all, and, you know, share with you what God placed on my heart, and, you know, just, I pray that God speaks to you and moves you with that. Amen? So, I don't know, yeah, we have a couple of bibles around the room. If y'all want, you can turn with me to Romans 8. I'm gonna be kind of skipping around in it just a wee bit, but I'm gonna start on verse 18, Romans 8. So, I'll skip a little minute so y'all turn to that. I'm gonna start on verse 18, and I'm reading from the Ani. My phone just stopped working, guys, look at that! So, it's alright, I'm gonna go ahead and read it from the King James then, so no problem. We're just saying the enemies have been defeated, and I'm not gonna let this hold back the word, amen? I need some encouragement, guys, amen? Yes, amen. Alright, so, I'm gonna try this one more time, because I really want to read it to you if I'm not urgent. No, spare it me for like several seconds. Oh, thank you, thank you so much. Alright, so like I said, I'm gonna start from verse 18, are y'all with me?
Yes.
Okay. "Yet what we suffer now is nothing compared to the glory he will reveal to us later." I'm skipping over to verse 28. "And we know that God causes everything to work together for the good of those who love God and are called according to His purpose for Him. For God knew His people in advance, and He chose them to become like His Son, so that His Son would be the firstborn among many brothers and sisters. And having chosen them, He called them to come to Him, and having called them, He gave them right standing with Himself. And having given them right standing, He gave them His glory." I'm gonna skip over to 33. "Who dares accuse us, whom God has chosen for His own? No one, for God Himself has given us right standing in Himself." Who will condemn us? No one, for Christ Jesus died for us, and He was raised to life for us, and He's sitting in the place of honor at God's right hand pleading for us. And I'm gonna skip over to 37. "No, despite all things, overwhelming victory is ours through Christ Jesus, who loved us." Amen?
Amen.
Amen, thank you for this. I'm gonna put it right here. Alright, I'm gonna go ahead and open up with a little word of prayer. Lord Jesus, I just, I think you've fulfilled this place, Lord. The worship was incredible, and we know that you showed up in this place. I ask that you continue with that, just speak to these men, open up their heart and their ears, and help them to receive, and just pour off your Spirit on us, in Jesus' name, amen? Alright, so, I started off in Romans, right? But I'm not gonna be talking about Romans, I mean, I am, but I'm not. I'm actually gonna be talking about David, so, it's in First Samuel, but I'm not actually gonna be reading from First Samuel. So, most of us know David, King David, as we might know him. I'm gonna give you a little bit of history. So, around this time, Israel, you know, God's chosen people, they were totally ruled by God. Theocracy? Yes, so they were a theocracy. I wanna make sure I say it right, y'all. So, they were a theocracy, totally ruled by God, and they had a lot of enemies, and most of those enemies, in fact, all those enemies had kings. And they started to, you know, question God, as they always do, and as we always do, although He tells us He has a plan for us, we're still like, "I don't see you, I don't see you, I need you to be right here around me and tell me what to do." And He's like, "No, I'm telling you what to do," but they insisted and insisted, "I want a king, I want a king." And so Samuel, being the prophet and the judge at the time, he was really like freaked by this. He was like, "God, they're, I'm leading them, like, aren't I doing a good job?" And God's like, "No, they're not rejecting you, they're rejecting me." So, if they want a king, they'll have a king, but tell them what it is, you know, tell them, "This king is not gonna do good things for you, like, I'm the only ruler that's really gonna bring the glory. You don't want this." And he told them over and over and over, but they insisted, "I want a king, yes?" So, God had Samuel to appoint Saul, y'all know King Saul? Yeah, he wasn't that great. No, he wasn't, he wasn't. Honestly, just, I wanna be blunt, that's just who I am. So, he wasn't that great, but by mere appearances, he was. I mean, honestly, Israel, we try to say, "Oh, they were wrong for that," but you know, as human beings, we judge, immediately, we judge by the outer, because I don't know you, I don't know your story, but immediately when I see you, despite what I try not to do, you've made a first impression, and I have judged, correct? Always, it's just like that, and so that's what they did. So Saul was tall and handsome and all that good stuff. Men like to be tall, he was ahead, ahead above everyone in the kingdom. So, by mere appearances, he looked like a king, he had the stature of a king, and that was the king, and they were excited. And then, you know, Saul was not following what God had told him to do. He was going by his own opinion on what was right, and he wasn't bringing God the glory, and eventually God was tired of it. He was like, "Your time is just about up, and I'm gonna go ahead and tear the kingdom from you," right? So, at this time, God had told Samuel, "I'm gonna go ahead and have you anoint a new king. I want you to go to the town of Bethlehem," y'all know that's where Jesus is from, that kinda excites me. But, so, go to the town of Bethlehem and go to Jesse's house and anoint a king, right? So he goes, and Samuel goes to Bethlehem, and he goes to Jesse's door, and God had told him, "Go and make a sacrifice, and tell them to come and make a sacrifice for you and to present His sons." So Samuel's like, "Hey Jesse, the anointed one is in your house, I need you to bring me all of your sons, and I'm basically gonna look at them, and God's gonna choose a king," right? So he's like, you know, "Get all your sons, Jesse, get all your sons." And so Jesse gets his sons, right? He gets seven of his sons, and he lines them up, you know, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, and Samuel starts examining them, and he comes up to one, and he's like, "Surely this is the king." Just like all of us, he looked at his daughter, he looked at mere appearances, and I don't know why Samuel did it, but he did it. He was like, "That's who God wants to be king." And God was like, "No, I didn't say that." And that's when he tells us, you know, "Man looks at the mere appearance, but God looks at your heart." So, we see there, that guy did not have the heart that God was looking for, yes? So he keeps going, "One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. We have gone through all of your sons, Jesse, the king is not here, God said the king is here, where is the king? Do you not have any other sons?" And Jesse's like, "Yeah, I do have one more, actually. He's my youngest, he's out in the field tending my sheep." And Samuel's like, "Can you go get him?" So, right, so he brings, I'm sorry, guys, I get excited. So he brings David in, so this is who we're talking about, yes? So David, the youngest, he's tending the sheep, he brings him in, he smells like sheep, and, you know, he's the youngest, so he's not the tallest. You know, priority kinda goes towards the firstborn and being the youngest, it just, it wasn't hidden for them, but God said, "No, that's the king of Israel, that's who I want you to anoint." And so thus, David is anointed king of Israel, and I just, I'm trying to think of the jealousy that had to have been placed in their brother's heart. I mean, they already had to have thought not much about him, kinda written him off, because if it's, they didn't say, "Hey, hey, whoa, Samuel, stop, my brother is out in the field," didn't they? They were like, "No, I, okay, that's me, this is your sons." So, we already see that they had a negative attitude towards him. So, now he's brought in, him being the youngest, tending the sheep, they written him off, and God says, "That's the king." So moving on. So with that, before we move on, actually, I wanna take a moment and see if you realize, so David has been written off, he has been written off by his brothers? He's been written off by his own father, and who knows about his mother? I mean, we don't know anything about his mother, so everyone that he knows has written him off. He's in the field, he's tending his father's sheep, and now he's been told, "You are the king of Israel," and nothing happens. Nothing happens. God has sat here and given him a promise in a hopeless place, and then he turns around and says, "Alright." It's like silence in his life, nothing happened, the circumstances did not change. He turned around and he walked right back into that field, isolated, abandoned, written off, and he tended his father's sheep. And mind you, the cattle of his fathers was his father's wealth, so he's tending to his father's wealth, in which he really wouldn't have gotten that much of an inheritance for, because at that time, it was common that when the father was to pass, the firstborn would get half of what the father owned, and then the rest of the sons would get the rest. So, I mean, he wasn't gonna get that much, yet he's looking after his father's wealth. It's crazy, guys. So he goes back, right, he goes back, so he's given this promise, he goes back, and he's back in the field. He's isolated, he's abandoned, he's written off, there's nothing but land around him, there's no one to talk to. I mean, we've already examined that all his family's written him off, who does he have to talk to? He's in the wilderness, he's looking around and there's no one, right? And so David is confronted with a couple of things, it's crazy, guys. I think we're too quick to read over this and be like, "Yeah, he fought a lion and a bear," but have y'all ever seen a lion? I went to the zoo, and I like the zoo, I really do. And I went to the zoo, and those lions were huge, okay? Those guys, and lions are my favorite animal, so I'm excited. Those guys stood up on their high legs and put their paws on the fence, which was amazing, and their paw was as big as my face, as big as my face. And mind you, David's younger than me, David was like, what, 12, 13 maybe at that time? He is a little boy, and I'm not that tall, so maybe he was about my size, but still, me? Imagine that, okay, I'm out in the wilderness, there is no one to protect me. Y'all saw how I looked to the dogs, I would not go out there. A lion? Lions can get up to over 500 pounds. Someone like me, and smaller, facing a lion and a bear? I don't even know how big the bear was, but I don't imagine that it was a little panda, I imagine that it was a big monster. So, we know that David had went through some stuff, I mean, really? So he, he like took a sheep out of the lion's mouth? I can just picture that, because, okay, so when I was at the zoo, the lions got up on the fence, and I don't know what they're called, trainers or something, they were throwing them ground beef as big as my face, balls of ground beef, and those lions were demolishing it, like demolishing. So, imagine, there's like a sheep, your father's sheep, that you're not getting here, and he's already written you off, right? He already said, "You're not a son." You know you're not gonna get anything, but his sheep is in that lion's mouth, and you put your own life on the line to save that sheep? David was an honorable man, I love you, Dad, but if you did that to me, your sheep will be gone. I'm just saying, so let's not be too quick to walk past that, because, you know, to God be the glory for David, but sometimes, you know, I'm still working on my salvation, yes? Die to my flesh, David. So, so moving on, so David goes back, and he counters the lion, he counters the bear, he's in isolation, he's been written off, he's desolate, he is alone, and he's the king. Alone, but he's the king. Kind of a contradiction, yes? I mean, to me it is, that's not what I would envision for the king of Israel. So anyways, so moving on, so then what happens was, Israel is confronted with one of its biggest enemies, the Philistines. Y'all heard of the Philistines? They were bad, they were real bad, right? So, so there were two mountains, and the Israelites were on one mountain, and the Philistines were on another, there was a valley between them, excuse me. And this one guy named Goliath came out, and he was a huge guy. This guy was nine feet tall and nine inches tall. I don't know if there's anyone that tall in the room, or even close? I can't even imagine it, like, it was way up there. So this guy is huge, yes, and David is a little boy, and so this guy comes out, and he's like, "Hey," and I'm paraphrasing, so, he's like, "Hey, y'all come and fight me, right? Y'all are not powerful, you're not, your God's not with you, come and fight me, and let's see who's really powerful. And if you win, we will serve you, and if I win, I'll serve you." And Israel was like, they were shaking, that was a bad interpretation, but they were shaking, just envision them shaking. Grown men, warriors, right, in the army. So, I don't know about you, but in my opinion, if someone in the army who was supposed to be like the most brave to protect the country, if you're shaking, I don't think I even have a chance, like, I'm gone. I'm not one to stick around when things like that happen, I will be gone. So these guys are all shaking, and this guy comes out, you know, huge big guy with all his armor, it was a lot of armor. It was like, there was like five verses that talked about his armor, so this guy was prepared. He's already a big guy, so we know it's gonna go up against him, come on now, I'm not gonna be like, "Hey, I'm gonna fight you." It's not gonna happen, right? And so for 40 days, this guy came out and taunted Israel, and one day Jesse, he had his sons at the battlefield. Obviously, they weren't doing anything, what were they doing? They were doing nothing, right? And Jesse was like, "So David, go take your sons, go take your brothers a sandwich, and make sure they're alright. Give me a good word, come back and go take care of my sheep," right? So David goes out there, and he brings them the food, and then he kinda looks around, and he's like, "What is going on? Like, this guy has been coming out here for real? Don't you guys know that we are the children of the living God? Like, he is here with us, what does this guy have against us? Why are we scared?" And one of his brothers was like, "David, what are you even talking about? Why are you even out here?" And David was like, "Can I not say anything? Scared." And he kept on talking, right? So he went on and talked to another one, and he said the same thing, like, "We are the children of the living God, why are you scared? If God is for us, who can be against us? It's not us that fights the battle, it's God." And this guy had amazing, I mean, excuse me, this kid, this kid, right? I mean, what did they call him again? He was a kid. He had incredible faith, and so he's like, he's getting real zealous now, he's like, "Come on, guys, we can take him." He goes up to Saul, and he's like, "Excuse me," you know, 'cause you can't just walk up to a king, so it's already a big deal, like, he just walked up to Saul, and he's like, "Excuse me, I see that guy over there, the Philistine, you know, the big one that everyone's scared of? I can take him, I'm gonna go ahead and do that, alright?" And once again, I'm paraphrasing, so, excuse me. But Saul's like, "No, you're a little boy, like, do you not understand?" Like, okay, guys, imagine like the baddest, like craziest, fiercest guy in America, and your 12-year-old son comes up to you, and he's like, "Dad, I saw him, I saw him on the street, I'm gonna take him, I'm gonna take him." "Okay, Dad, I'm gonna take him." You're gonna be like, "Get in the house, you don't know what you're doing. I'm not gonna let you get out there and get killed." And that's what Saul's initial reaction was, but David's like, "No, no, no, God is with us, God is not on their side. God created them, He gave them breath, do you not think that He will deliver us? Deliver them into our hands?" And Saul's like, basically, he's thinking, "I hate to see this little boy killed, but he's real zealous, and I'm gonna go ahead and let him do his thing." So he's like, "Alright, son, here's what I'm gonna do, I'm gonna give you my armor, and you can go ahead and get out there." And so David's like, "Okay, thank you." So he puts on his armor, but the armor was huge, right? Because remember Saul was a big guy, and David was a little kid, so it was too big, he couldn't walk in it, he couldn't move in it. And so David was like, "King Saul, I can't do this, I can't move with it, it's gonna hold me back, it's not God, it's not me that fights the battles, it's God, like, just let me do it." And Saul's like, "Alright," I mean, once again, he's getting written off again, right? He's like, "He's as good as dead, it sucks, but..." Oh well, so David goes out there, right, and so Goliath, nine feet, nine inches, huge guy, he has all of the mighty warriors shaking in their armor for 40 days. This is not just one day, this is 40 days, an army of grown men. You know he had to be bad for an army of grown men for 40 days to fear him, that is crazy. So he walks out there, and he has five little stones, little pebbles, a little sling. What's it called, slingshot? That's what I envisioned in that. And so he goes out there, and Goliath is like, "Where's the punchline? Come on, go home, kid, go to your dad." But David's like, "I'm not concerned, God's got this." So he goes out there, right, so he takes his pebble, his first pebble, and he pegs Goliath, and Goliath falls, and he cuts off Goliath's head. It's crazy, he defeated Goliath after 40 days of Goliath taunting the army. This little boy with no armor, with a zeal for God, knowing that God has got him, goes out and destroys him with a pebble, and then cuts off his head and brings it to Saul. I think that's pretty amazing, yes?
Yes.
In my opinion, it's amazing. So, so then Saul goes on later to bring David in as an armor bearer for him. He also, he plays the lyre and those string instruments, and Saul, he kept on getting possessed by an evil spirit, and he wanted to know if there was anyone around that, you know, could play music, and, you know, someone told him about David, and so David came, and whenever he was possessed, he played the lyre, he worshipped, and the evil spirit fled. And so Saul brought him in as an armor bearer, and then he started to kinda put him in battle. We already know David's a warrior, I mean, come on, the kid killed a lion and a bear? The kid has been alone all his life? He's a warrior. So we already know that he's gonna overcome, especially because he knows who's fighting the battle. I mean, that right there is victory in itself, you don't even have to pick up a weapon. If God is for you, if He says it's done, you are gone, nothing can be against you. So he knew that, and so with him, he walked in that authority, and he killed a lot of people. So Saul put him out in battle a lot, and he killed a lot of people. And there was one specific time where that happened, and they came back to the town after the battle, and there were these women singing, Saul killed his thousands, David killed his 10,000s. And Saul was like, "He's the king, like, you're singing a song that this little boy..." You know, he's grown up, but he's still young, "that this young boy is killing his 10,000s when the king is only killing his thousands?" And we already know Saul has an issue with pride, so that had to get him, right? I mean, I think that would have to really, really get him, so he started getting mad, guys, he got real mad. So he still had David under his wing, but he was starting to kinda get some malicious thoughts and be like, goes and turns his head, "I'm gonna take him out." He did that multiple times, he tried to take out David so many times. Eventually David had to run, and the thing was, David had became good friends with Saul's son, Jonathan, and so Jonathan wasn't even aware that Saul wanted to take out David, but when David made him aware, that kinda devised this plan, and they figured, "Alright, if Saul really wants to take you out, such and such is gonna take place, and then we'll know you need to go on." And such and such took place, and Jonathan was like, "Ooh, he does wanna kill you, you better go." Right? And so eventually Saul dies, and David is anointed king. So, all that, all that to say that this kid had been, I mean, from his birth, he had been written off, I mean, not even counted as a son, he doesn't have a mother, his seven brothers don't even, they don't consider him a brother, he's in isolation, he has no one around him, and he's fighting these lions, he's fighting these bears, and so God has really worked, that's a lot, that's a lot of rejection, that's a lot of heartache for a kid, a young man to go through. I mean, you would think that that would destroy him, I mean, for all your life to be rejected? I mean, I'm just in awe that he had such an admiration for God and such a faith in him, because I don't know about you, but if all my life I had been written off and isolated, and shown that I had no love, and all of these hardships were coming after me, I might have a hard time imagining that this God who I've never seen has my back, because who's had my back so far? I've been out here fighting these lions by myself in this secret place when no one else sees, because everyone has written me off. I'm fighting these battles that nobody knows, these giants that if you would look at, you would shake in your armor for 40 days, but I have conquered. It's really an incredible thing. And as I've been close, I told the story, and I feel like it has moved some of you, and that's amazing. But I want to ask you a question. What is your lion? What is that thing? What is that thing that creeps up on you time after time when you're in isolation? When you've been abandoned, when everyone has written you off? What is that thing that keeps knocking on your door that makes you feel like, "I can't get through this"? The thing is, the Bible says that we're more than conquerors in Christ Jesus. He says, "We have overcome," not "we will," "we have overcome," "by the blood of the Lamb and the word of His testimony." That means, like He said, we say there's a war going on, but if you're in Christ, it's already won. All we have to do is get in alignment, God said it's won, step into that with authority, and know that it is won, no matter what, it is won, no matter what you're going through. He says, "All things work together for the good of those that believe in Him and are called according to His purpose." Whether you were written off, whether you put yourself in a situation and written yourself off, all things, it doesn't matter what you did. He says, "Therefore let there be no more condemnation," because Jesus took that away with His blood. It's gone, no one can condemn you but Christ Jesus Himself, and He said, "That is washed away. I took on your sin, I took on your burden, do not be ashamed. Yes, you did some things, yes, you were in a place, but I already died for that. You don't have to die for that, stop kicking yourself, I've already made kicks for you. Walk in alignment with what I have for you, if all things work together, you're good." I mean, that's an amazing truth, can I just say, amen to that, like, believe in Christ Jesus. He has won the battle for you, you just have to step in alignment. He has won it, but the thing is, guys, He won it for His children. I mean, He died for all, but if you don't accept Him, because He adopted us pretty much, and so if you don't accept Him as a Father, He died for you, but you have to be His son to enter into the kingdom. Yes, He died for you in hopes, He died for you knowing that you were gonna sin, knowing that you were gonna do this and this and this, and you were gonna write Him off, and you were gonna say, "I don't believe in you," and still, He stood there taking those lashes, being spit on, the son of God, God Himself, God who created those men, that He allowed to spit on them? He took it for you, He said, "I know that He's gonna write me off. I know that He's gonna sin against me, I know He's gonna turn His back against me, but I love Him anyways, and I hope with everything that I have that one day He would come to me." He says, "It's already taken here, guys, you don't have to do anything." He says, "It's already taken care of, guys, you don't have to do anything but to come to Him. He's made the way, all things will work together for the good. There's nothing that you can do that will make Him write you off, as long as you stand in His will and accept that, that you don't have to be condemned, because He has already been condemned. He paid the ultimate price, we don't have to pay anymore. Step into alignment, that's what I challenge you today. I challenge you to, to look at those beasts, those lions that are attacking you and say, "Well, you have no power over me, my God has already overcome, I mean, the battle is won." I'm stepping into alignment? Look, I know that you have told me that I'm king, but God, I'm looking around, nothing has changed. I'm still in the desert, I'm still alone, and my family has still written me off. So what am I doing with that, God? You said I'm supposed to be king, but I'm out here alone. Where is my hope? God said, "I'm your hope. I'm everything to you, I can be everything to you. I can be better than a brother, I can be better than a son. Accept me, I already accept you, I love you first, I love you. Please love me back, I would do anything for you. I gave my own son, I gave my son, because He's Jesus, He's the Son of God, but Jesus is God. So He gave Himself to be martyred for your sake. He wants you, He loves you despite what you've done, and He's already conquered every one of those lions. He's already conquered the Goliath in your life, He just says, "Just believe, believe." So I challenge you in this moment, as our deacons come forward, to really examine, examine, examine what goes on in that secret place in the earth. Examine the things that haunt you, although you hear, "I'm the Son of God, and, and, and I'm a king, and I'm the Son of God, and I'm a prince, and I have all these things, and I'm more than a conqueror." But where's my victory? Because that lion is right there, and I don't have anyone around me. Examine that, and know that God has already taken care of it. That is your building ground, and He is gonna take that, He's gonna build you up as a strong man, and He's gonna send you out into the nations to save those people that now don't have hope. He will give you hope, He is your hope, He's here for you, and He wants you. So I would ask, if there's any of you that don't, that don't have that assurance that, that you are a Son of God? Because let me tell you, it, it takes a commitment, it takes a firm commitment. You have to call upon the name of the Lord, you have to say, "God, oh wretched man I am. Lord, see me and all my guilt, but take me. I submit myself to you, I will walk in alignment according to your will, have your weight over me. I don't care what I see, I don't care that I'm in the wilderness, I don't care that I see the lion there. I know I have the victory, I don't care that I don't have armor, I don't care that all I have is a stick. If I didn't have anything, I would still praise you, and that lion would be taken care of." It's gone, it's done. Submit yourself to God, these men are here to pray for you. If you haven't made that commitment, God, I challenge you to come. And if you have, if you've turned your back on that commitment, or you're wondering about that commitment, come, let them pray for you. Even if you have made that commitment, and you're in that stage where you, you have been told that you have everything, and that you're the Son of God, and that you will inherit all of this, but you see nothing? You see the isolation? Let them pray for you, let them, let, 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 let them speak, let God speak through them. And, 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 and just know that, that God is here, and that what He promised to you will come to pass. Because God is not a man that you should lie. If He declared it for you, it is done. Walk in alignment, I don't care what you see, I don't care who writes you off, says, "He doesn't look like a king, he doesn't look like a successful man, he doesn't look like he'll ever make anything. Look at him, he has no one to support him, he's nothing." Know that God said, "Uh-uh, that's my God, that is a man after life with heart. I love him, and I would give anything for him." Come to Him, guys. We're gonna go ahead and play this last song, "I Urge You." It's a sense of urgency for you, because you don't know tomorrow is not promised, you don't know if you're gonna be here. Don't put it off, allow them to pray for you. Submit yourself to God, and walk in that alignment, walk in that authority, and walk in that boldness. He loves you, and He's asking for you to come.